Aloha, Representative Todd. We're going to be convening our 9:00 AM Thursday, February 8th, agenda for the Committee on Transportation. We're going to open up with two bills for the purposes of decision-making, and then we'll recess briefly before proceeding with the rest of today's agenda. The first bill on the agenda is HB 1594 relating to intoxicating liquor. This has to do with license restrictions after being, I guess, convicted of a DUI offense. The plan, since this is already going to be heading to the Judiciary Committee, which has the original author and kind of specializes in these sorts of things, is we'll move it forward with some technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, a defective date of July 1st, 3000. And in the committee report, we will note the Attorney General's testimony about kind of the need for clarity around some of the language in the bill. Members, do you have any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1594, moving to adopt this. So Vice Chair and Chair voting aye, Representative Ayu?
Aye.
Representative Ebsen excused, Representative Kitakawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Wonishi?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, HB 1935 relating to the use of intoxicants while operating a vehicle. This is the BAC Legal Limit Reduction Bill. I'll walk through kind of the plan, my recommendations, and then I'll speak a little bit, and then I'll give members an opportunity if they'd like to share some comments or if they have any questions. But I've been working closely with our prosecuting attorney on the Big Island, and essentially what we're going to do, and I'm going to try not to butcher some of the legal language, is we're going to insert new language specifically for .05 to .079 to make that specific area of this offense eligible for a deferred acceptance or no contendere plea. I don't speak Latin. But basically, the intent is we would make this deferral eligible, provided that they go through whatever is court ordered. They would potentially have the option to have this expunged at the end of meeting that criteria, but it would only apply to that .05 to .079 range, so it would not be applying to anything higher within the current statute. It would not be impacting the current DUI statute. In addition to that, we would insert a blank appropriation from the Highway Special Fund for a public education campaign. We'd be inserting a defective date, which for those not super aware of how this works, it's just standard practice. We need to do it on pretty much every piece of legislation, but if the bill should pass, you'd get an actual effective date inserted down the road. We would also note in the committee report the need for some sort of delayed implementation window to allow that public education campaign to take place. Just on a personal note, before I turn it over to members, you know, I really struggled with it. I put a lot of, I did a lot of research, probably more on this bill than anything else, and I tried to find a balance, and I really struggled with it, and this is kind of my best attempt. I think ultimately what it came down to is, you know, I'm a father, and you try to do everything you can to protect your kid, and there's only so much you can do. But that, you know, it cuts both ways. You want them to both be safe, but also, you know, in this new category, which would not, prior to this, be illegal, I don't want someone who's kind of entering the criminal justice system for the first time, possibly the only time in that category, and with this mistake really following them forever. And I realize that for a lot of folks who, you know, are victims of these sorts of crashes, that, you know, that may fall on deaf ears a little bit, but that's the balance I'm trying to find. And I'm hoping that this language finds that balance, at least in the best way I can. But that's pretty much all I got. Maybe?
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for those amendments. You know, Tuesday's hearing was very moving. I really believe that now, and I come from Hilo, and Hilo, we have a lot of issues in terms of people getting alternative means of transportation on island, you know, to going to a bar. And, you know, we don't have a good mass transit system. We don't really have taxis. I've waited over an hour for a taxi to go home. So that's a real challenge, you know, to ask people, hey, you can go out, but you shouldn't drive. But after Tuesday's testimony, I feel really compelled to support zero tolerance. And so, you know, with that being said, I think that we should not allow anyone to be able to drive who has consumed alcohol. So with that, I'll be voting with reservations on this bill to see how it moves in the ledge. Thank you, Chair.
Do you have anything?
I guess I'll just say I appreciate the effort to keep the bill moving. I would rather have something going than nothing, so I'll be supporting this bill.
You have anything?
I just, I also walked into the hearing on, I've lost all track of time today, it's Tuesday, yes. Not very knowledgeable about the subject, and without even really strong feelings on the subject, and walked out of there really feeling like we do have to move on lowering the quantum level, so I do, or the threshold level. I appreciate everybody who came out to testify and share your stories, and it is an example, I think, as the Chair said, of how compelling testimony can change minds. So, and I appreciate the Chair working for a pathway forward here on what's hopefully a viable bill, so I will be supporting the Chair's amendments. But thank you all for coming and sharing your stories.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, there's no secret that I have some of the most fierce advocates for this measure in my district, but I want to just applaud Chair Todd. I think this is the furthest it's gotten, and although sometimes things are not the way you want, compromise is better than nothing. And more than anything, this has gained further traction than ever before. And so I think the work of you folks should be applauded, because you folks came in here with great intentions and intentional advocacy. And I hope, as we continue the discussions, that folks who are looking at things they're passionate about can reflect to the work that you folks did on this measure. And I hope you folks can continue to stay engaged in making sure that there is a compromise or something that we can have tangible teeth on, because as I've learned in the legislative process, something is better than nothing. And I'm just grateful again for folks like Uncle Ed Werner and the many folks out on our side for the work that you folks do. Thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Chair, I think you have more than enough votes to pass this bill out of this committee, but I, and before the Tuesday committee hearing, I didn't have strong opinions about this bill either, but after hearing the testimony, I think we need to be serious and we need to be bold about this issue. And so I reflect similar sentiments to Representative Wonishi that it needs to be zero. We need to save lives, and from a practical effect, when you're at the bar, you don't know the difference between .2 or .5 or .8, and you don't know what that means as far as consuming alcohol. And so I want us to take bold action here. I want to be at zero. So I'm going to vote no on this bill, because I want to send a strong message to everyone that you should not get in a car under any amount of alcohol. It's just simply not acceptable, given the cost of human life. And so I hope that that opinion gets reflected in the committee report, that we need to be the first in the nation here on this issue. And I don't want to support anything unless it's absolute and it's zero. So, thank you, Chair.
You got anything?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank you for working so diligently on this bill, and thank you to all the testifiers, you know, for sharing so passionately with all of us. It was very moving on Tuesday. I am going to support the bill, because I do want to see it keep moving in the House, so thank you.
Great, thank you. And just because I know there has been a lot of media attention, I did want to note, .05 is already illegal if you show signs of being inebriated. This basically just sets an objective standard to what is currently objective in that range. So I just wanted to note that, because I do think there's a lot of confusion around that, and maybe it hasn't been messaged quite properly in the past. But with that being said, go to Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Noting the reservation vote from Representative Wonishi, Representative Ayu voting no on HB 1935. Members, are there anyone wishing to vote reservations or no? Seeing none, your measure is adopted, Chair.
You caught the?
Oh, sorry, and excuse, oh, sorry. We have everybody here.
We're good?
Yeah. I'm going to recall, sorry.
Just in case.
From the beginning. Voting on HB 1935, noting the presence of all members, I'm just going to go through real call vote. Chair Todd, and Vice Chair Keelah voting aye, Representative Ayu is a no. Representative Ebsen?
Aye.
Representative Kitakawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Wonishi?
Reservations.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Yeah, I think you actually had that, but, okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to recess briefly, and let you folks do what you got to do, and then we'll reconvene to the rest of the agenda. Okay, recess. Okay, aloha. We are reconvening our 9:00 AM Thursday, February 8th, agenda for the Committee on Transportation. The first item on our agenda will be HB 1576 relating to vehicle number plates. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Measure testifying on HB 1576, Honolulu Police Department Officer Tanaka in opposition.
Good morning, Major. Stacey Tanaka from HPD Traffic Division. HPD stands on their written testimony. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Major. Allery Castillo, individual in support. Paul Maldonado, individual in support. Keith Kaya LeE, individual in support. Valvedez, individual in support. Ryan Christopher, individual in support, and individual Colani in support. Seeing no other further registered testifiers or anybody online or in the room like to testify on HB 1576. Seeing none, Chair.
Okay, members, do you have any questions? If not, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, HB 1579 relating to windshield tinting.
Thank you, Chair. HB 1579, first, Major Tanaka from Honolulu Police Department.
Good morning, and again, I'm here to answer any questions. We're in opposition.
Thank you, Major. There are 17 folks in support of this bill, one in opposition. Next registered testifier is Allery Castillo in support on Zoom. President, thank you. Not present, thank you. Sorry, Director Sniffen, Department of Transportation in opposition.
Thank you, Chair Todd, Vice Chair Keela, members of the committee, Tammy Lee, Deputy Director for Administration at the Department of Transportation. The DOT stands in opposition on its, on its testimony is contrary to federal requirements. And I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on HB one five seven nine, are there any folks online or in person like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Okay, members, do you have any questions on this measure?
I have a question.
Raquila first.
So the opposition is based on federal...
The federal code of federal regulations. It doesn't comply with the minimum light transmittance requirements under the CFR.
How does California get around it?
I'm going to ask subject matter expert Toby Wakamoto. Toby, did you hear the question? California has this on the books.
Sorry, I just muted. Well, do you happen to know what California's legal limit is?
They can go up to five percent and Texas is the same.
You know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. We can, we can ask NHTSA because, yeah, like, like what Tammy was saying, we're just following the federal rule. The federal rule has it as thirty percent. So Hawaii's is thirty-five percent, plus or minus six percent.
So there could be a middle ground of twenty-five if you're given under thirty?
Well, Hawaii leaves it at thirty-five, and we do plus or minus a six, so you come to about thirty, twenty-nine, thirty, because sometimes there's some glasses already a little tinted before they put the other tint on. That's why they give them that little plus or minus. But I'm not sure how those other states are getting around the, the federal requirement. Like, like I said, I would have to follow up with NHTSA and see how they're doing that.
Well, the intent is for sedans, right? Because it's exempt for the back windows on any larger vehicles in a sedan. And most sedans, when they're coming from the factory because of the classification, they don't have dark glass. So they're just straight fishbowl, right? And I just think my intent is to, people pay exorbitant registration and/or safety check fees. Hawaii is getting hotter, and in some ways, we're disincentivizing people to use sedans by giving extra exemptions to SUVs, right? I think historically, the feds have always given exemptions to larger classes of vehicles. So I'm just trying to find a way to one, I think, reflect current times Hawaii is hot. But two, sedans are, I think, in, in equality, they're affected more. But three, I think you can't protect someone in a sedan versus an SUV, so...
Yeah, we'll take a further look at it for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
For HPD, I, I see your comments about that tinted windows can impair motorist vision, but what's the effective difference, I guess, following up on Rep Keela's questions, between a sedan and a SUV?
So for an SUV, if you have side view mirrors, you're allowed to have the windows behind you dark.
Okay, so you're saying cars don't have side view mirrors?
That's just the law, sir.
I don't understand. Well, I'm asking from a practical effect, you're saying that, that the dark tinted windows impair your vision, can cause collision. What's the difference between a sedan's dark windows and a SUV's dark windows?
There's, there's no difference, sir, if that's what you're getting at. But the law states that cars are allowed, so that's why, I'm saying that if the, the windows are darker from a law enforcement, law enforcement standpoint, it hampers our vision seen into it, especially at night. There are tinted, I shouldn't say tinted, but films that you can put on your car that are not tinted but clear, but still blocks out UV light. So that's, that's an option.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. Okay, members, any additional questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, HB one five six nine.
Thank you, Chair. HB one five six nine, up first Deputy, I mean, up first Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation, providing comments.
The DOT stands on its written testimony providing comments.
Thank you. Up next, Melissa Pavlicek, Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association, opposition.
Aloha, I'm Melissa Pavlicek. I'm here today on behalf of the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association, re-represent sixty-seven new automobile dealers. And we respectfully oppose this measure because of the lights that are already in new vehicles and our ability to affect what types of vehicles we have here for sale is very limited, and just ask that you defer this measure.
Thank you. Up next, Tiffany Aijima, Alliance for Automotive Innovation, opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tiffany Aijima, on behalf of the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. We do respectfully oppose this measure, and we appreciate the intent of it. We would just ask that perhaps something you can look at is putting this in the list of motor vehicle inspections, as something to consider to catch violators of the law. We have additional comments in opposition in our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Nancy Jones in support. Zev Jones in support. On HB one five six nine, any other folks in the room or online that like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, do you have any questions? Rep Keela?
DOT. So with the testimony provided from Alliance for Automotive Innovation, does state administer safety check?
Yes, we do.
In the capacity of the suggestion that, I know you folks already inspect the headlights for operation, but I think some of the concern is that LED lights coming from the factory are much different than in the aftermarket, right? Because I think what you really want for LED bulbs or any light emitting source is a single projection. But when the LED bulbs are multi-projection, that's the one that kind of messes everything up, and also the housing itself. Is that something potentially DOT would be interested in exploring, adding to the safety check process, that the light bulbs are in correspondence with roadway law?
Toby, do you have any inclination on Representative Keela's question to add it to our safety check process?
So, so are you asking if we, we should add the requirement for LED to, to pass a safety inspection?
No, I think I'm asking in the capacity that the measure that they're in opposition, but in the sense that the light emitting technology that's coming from headlights, if it's done in the aftermarket capacity, it's to the standard of a single, right? Because I think that's the issue, is the light bulbs that are not single projecting versus multi-projection going to a headlight housing that doesn't have the capacity to emit the light correctly. Is that something in the safety check process you folks can identify?
Well, so, so, you know, currently, what they kind of make sure the headlights are, have is that the US DOT marking first and foremost, because, you know, so, so we realize, we know that it passes federal safety standards. And then, and then, you know, they, they passed the bill last year trying to enforce the, the output, maybe, you know, how bright the lights are, and, and, you know, so right now, we're kind of measuring that they're, they're bright enough, but not too bright, you know? So we're, we're trying to implement that right now. That, that's the newest thing that passed as of last year, though.
Okay, and so I think, I'm, I'm not necessarily concerned about the, the DOT classification, the housing, but the light technology that folks add on the aftermarket, are you folks, is there any appetite from DOT?
Well, like, like, so some of the aftermarket lights have the, the US DOT marking, like I say, and, and they do the testing, whether it lines up, you know, like, whether the, the light is aiming straight, I should say. You know, I mean, it, it's something we haven't explored yet. I think we, we could obviously look into it, you know, because, you know, this LED, it's, it's kind of new technology with lights and, and vehicles, you know? The, the other thing, you know, with, sorry, that's all I had. Sorry about that.
No, no, no. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Members, any additional questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, HB one five three one relating to motor vehicle insurance.
Thank you, Chair. HB one five, one five three one, up first Nancy Jones in support, individual. Next, Zev Jones, individual in support. Seeing no other further registered testifiers for HB one five three one, any members, I mean, any folks online or in the room like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
All right, thank you. Members, do you have any questions? I guess there's no one to really ask, that's fine. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, HB one nine three six relating to harbor safety.
Thank you, Chair. So in this measure, we have a hundred eighty-one people who submitted testimony in support, twelve in opposition, and three providing comments. I usually read off just if it's small people who provided testimony, but for the sake of time, if you register to testify, I will call you, and at the end, if you'd like to provide testimony, I will do, do so at the time. Up first, HB one nine three six, Chair Leo Ascension of the Public Utilities Commission in providing comments.
Aloha, good morning, Chair Todd, Vice Chair Keela, and members of the House Committee on Transportation. My name's Andrew Okabi. I am a utility analyst with the Public Utilities Commission. I'm here on behalf of Chair Leo Ascension of the Public Utilities Commission. We sound our written testimony, offering comment on HB nineteen thirty-seven or nineteen thirty-six, I apologize. I'm available for any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Jim Gohn, Hawaii Cement, oh, sorry, Julie Yunker, Hawaii Gas, providing comments.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Julie Yunker with Hawaii Gas. We're standing on our testimony, offering comments in a suggested amendment and here to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next, Bob Hood, Hawaii Energy Marketers Association, opposition. Not present, thank you. Up next, Stephanie Sakamoto, BIA Hawaii, providing comments. Not seeing Stephanie? Up next, Ryan Sakuda, General Contractors Association of Hawaii, providing comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ryan Sakuda, on behalf of the General Contractors Association. We stand on our written testimony. I'd just like to point out that we are in ongoing good faith negotiations with the stakeholders, and hopefully we'll be able to provide you guys some compromise language. Thanks.
Thank you. And then lastly, Brandon Wolf, ILW Hawaii.
Good morning, Chair, Co-Chair, members of the committee. Just like what Ryan said, we're working together with the stakeholders to make this happen. I would like to, for the record, state our intent, ILW's intent for this bill. And number one, we're here, this, our intention for this bill is to help, not hurt. We don't want to disrupt, we don't want to disrupt the supply chain, we want to make it better, want to make it more efficient. And we got to protect our waterfront. Everybody knows how that important it is to us. And we want to take steps in that way, through current statutes, amend them, make them better. Again, work with everybody and just improve our maritime commerce. So that's all I wanted to say, and that we are collaborating and working together to make this happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Seeing no further registered testifiers on HB one nine three six, is there anybody online who provide, who would like to provide testimony? Anyone in person that would like to provide testimony in HB one nine three six? Mr. Werner?
Hello, Chair and Vice Chair. You know, I totally support what they're doing. You know, when, when you bring outsiders to tie up at on dock and have no respect for our people, I think that's a no-no. I mean, full support with these guys.
Thank you, Mr. Werner. Any other folks in the room like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, Chair.
Actually, maybe I'll call up Mr. Wolf from ILW real quick. So I, so I know, and I've been talking to everyone, everyone involved, and I, I know you guys are kind of trying to negotiate some language out. So, you know, in your mind, you know, you think that language might be available, you know, sometime next week, prior to what would potentially be a next hearing? You think you, you guys kind of have the bones of it?
Yeah, I think we got that figured out.
And I think the, the intent, as far as I can gather, is trying to not pass expenses along to consumers, but trying to kind of, you know, pull something together.
The last thing we want to do is make life more difficult and more expensive for our people. That's not our intent, and we're willing to do whatever we got to do to avoid that.
Okay.
And, and we also, we, we don't, we want this to be a win-win across the board. Like Uncle was saying, there's, there's steps that aren't being taken right now. It's all good, it's been happening for a, a long time. We just took a hard look at it because we're on the waterfront, we see what's happening. A lot of people don't. Half the guys down on the waterfront don't really know what's happening unless you're watching. We saw some holes in the process, we want to make them better, and we don't want to hurt nobody. The stakeholders, the people who have been doing business helping our state grow, we want to support them, want to work with them. The people that are coming here, making a, a ton of money and leaving, and we get nothing out of it, we just want to know what's going on. We, that, that's where the, the amendment, the statutes come in is, we, we want awareness of what's happening. Everybody knows, everybody has a problem with the fireworks. There's a lot of, lot of, lot of maritime commerce happening over here that really no one's aware of. So this bill will, will help us, okay, let me back up. When the vessel comes here, they got to get lined, they have to be lined in. So this is what, this, this, we're specifically focusing on the lines piece of it with the intent of not hurting anyone. But now people come here, do business in Hawaii, we touch the line. The state knows, because they're certifying everybody. That's what we want. We want the state to certify everybody to do this job. And it sounds like a, it sounds like a, you know, small time, right? Like, oh, you just put the, the line on the, on the ballot, or you just tie up. It's actually one of the more dangerous operations on the waterfront. There's a high accident casualty rate, and there's deaths, too. We just had one this morning, not a death, but a serious injury. And this is, we're talking, right now, the current practice is, the people that don't know what, they're not familiar or, or experienced, they're going from ship, ship to shore, jumping off the vessel to tie up the vessel. We, we need a ground crew for that. This is where they get hurt, from there to there. And then they make their money and then they leave. So we're just saying, hey, we want to know when you guys are coming to our, when you, when you come to our state, we want to know about it. When you move from pier to pier, we want to know about that, too. And then we want to make it safe, we want the jobs attached to that. Doesn't got to go to the longshoreman, but it has to go to our people. And then, you know, the, the whole, the, the economic piece, oh, you know, the, now we got to pay more. Okay, we'll figure something out on tax, whatever, the tax breaks, whatever, language. But again, this is something, this is a step in the right direction to, to have more awareness of what's happening on the waterfront. And that's it, right there. We got to work together, we got to get this done. And then we can build off of that, but that's the intent right there.
Okay, I got you.
Thank you.
Members, do you have any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, HB two one one two related to moped insurance.
Thank you, Chair. Up first, HB two one one two, we have Deputy, I mean, we have Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. The DOT stands in support of this measure and of the framework.
Thank you. Up next, Kristi Kousar, H dot.
Oh.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, no, we're good.
Thank you. Up next, Corbin Gerard, individual in opposition on Zoom.
Hello?
Aye.
Yes, my name is Corbin Gerard. I'm a student of psychology going into my doctoral program. This issue is something I really think needs to be reconsidered. I posted statistics from the DOT in the chat. Motorcycle, mopeds and bicyclists, we share the same dangers and follow the rules of the law, often in the same lane, you know, if traffic is fast. You know, unfortunately, you know, we abide by the speed limits because our vehicles or our bodies can't go faster. And oftentimes, we're victims, and the DOT report that I texted in the chat stipulates in the last year, there have been nine bicycle deaths, okay? Because of getting hit by cars. And no moped deaths, but nine bicycle deaths, and that includes e-bikes. We're very aware of road conditions and the perils, and we try to avoid them. The need for legislating insurance... The need for legislating insurance to mopeds is really strange. You know, I saw two deaths last year of bicyclists, one on Kalanioli and one in town. Myself, I've been hit by cars twice, and I survived because of my moped. This is, I think, unnecessary regulation for people that are, you know, more law-abiding, especially with regards to speed limits and road safety than other people. We wear, you know, reflective vests, helmets, abide by the laws, and drive defensively because we have to. I think that, you know, if anything, there should be more awareness of road safety by those who are driving vehicles, motor vehicles. Those are four thousand pound vehicles coming at you at fifty-plus miles an hour because they can go over the speed limit. And when you get hit by one, it's potentially deadly, whether you're a bicyclist, e-bike, or moped rider. I think that's, I just, I would ask for further consideration and public input. This and other measures seem to be fast-tracked pertaining to mopeds, and I think it requires further scrutiny.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on the measure, anyone on Zoom or in person like to testify on the measure? Seeing none, Chair.
Maybe you have a question for the Department of Transportation. So in the testimony you provided, it kind of, it provided some figures for medical charges specifically for those involved in moped accidents at about seventeen million dollars per year over the last couple of years. Do we know precisely what portion of that is being borne by the state?
Kristi, do you know the research that we've done? Does that include, is that included among our research?
Because it does say thirty percent of patients are on Quest or Medicaid. But I was wondering if there's like a concrete figure, so we know what we're.
Good morning. This number is from the Department of Health, so this is the information that I got from them. And so we, I don't have that exact number, it'd be something that we'd have to consult with them. So that's not something the Department of Transportation tracks. So we can follow up with that if you want. As, you know, the self-care charity, we would have to kind of suss out what's Medicaid and what the state is paying. And I don't know if they have that kind of detail.
Yeah, we'll work on the details.
Yeah, and I recognize that's a kind of a complicated formula, but even if it's just a kind of estimation down the road, I think that might be helpful, assuming the bill progresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, do you have any additional? Raponishi, go ahead.
Okay, for DOT. So, those that were covered by insurance, this is information on medical insurance, right?
Kristi, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. So what, as free, as early as, or as late as twenty twenty-one, they were able to get data linkages from the certain hospitals. It's been difficult to get specific information from them because hospitals are a little more conservative about the information that they provide, especially when it comes to money. So this is the information we were able to get from them. Let's see. So it doesn't go that far back, and as far as this is the, it says they were able to link the EMS data to the hospital record. So this is what they were able to get. So it may be higher.
Okay, but, but this is medical insurance, correct?
EMS data to hospital, so it's whatever the hospital was able to report.
Right, so an individual might not have insurance that covers their moped, but they may have health insurance, which would cover the costs at the hospital.
Yeah, so it says.
This is not really indicative of the number of moped riders that have any kind of insurance for their moped, correct?
No, it's just, it's able to give us some information about, like, that they have information, certain kind of healthcare, whether it be through their jobs or other forms, but it's not, it would not be moped insurance. And this, that would cover, you know, their vehicle or some, you know, other, whatever their medical insurance could not cover, at least their vehicle insurance could cover.
Okay, but, so, do you have any information at all of the number of moped insurance that is written? I mean, this, this law is to require moped insurance.
Do we know what percentage of moped owners currently are insured for moped insurance?
It's not a requirement, so I'm going to, it's hard to track who doesn't have insurance, it would be easier to track who might have insurance.
But we don't, we don't have.
Because it's not legally required right now, I'm, I'm going to assume that they don't, many of them don't.
Okay, okay. I think that's the crux of the issue. I mean, you're giving us information about medical insurance coverage, and it could be because they have a moped insurance, or it could be just because they have healthcare. So
Yes.
It doesn't really help us in terms of making a decision on whether or not we should require mopeds to be insured, right?
Right.
The issue, I think, also is how much property damage is created by mopeds getting into accidents? How much of that is the moped driver's fault? And how much is a person in a vehicle creating the problem? So that's more information that we would need.
Okay.
Which, you know, if you can
Yes.
Figure that out and provide it to the committee chair, that would be very helpful.
You got anything to add? There you go, very convenient. Thank you for being here. I'm glad we scheduled the huge.
Thank you.
Gordon Ito, Insurance Commissioner. We, we didn't send the testimony, but just listening to the discussion, I just wanted to make two comments. One is the bill would require mopeds to purchase insurance. I just wanted to note in four thirty-one ten G, PIP, Personal Injury Protection, that, which is the medical portion, is not mandatory, like motor vehicle insurance in ten C. So it's an optional coverage under ten G, the motorcycle and motor scooter law. When we were looking at this bill, we were doing a little research, we weren't sure if any carrier offered moped insurance, but I think we found one potential carrier that does. And just as an FYI, I mean, with respect to that one carrier, we plugged in hypothetical thing, and it seemed like under that less than fifty cc motor, you could buy some kind of coverage. And it was relatively cheap for the BI and PD part, about seventy-five dollars we got quoted. But once you purchased the optional PIP coverage, it went up to over three hu, two hundred something dollars.
That would be for a six-month policy window, or?
I think it was for a year.
A year, okay. Great, I appreciate that. Rem, are you?
Don't, I guess I'm going anywhere. So I, I just want to make sure I understand. So if we add moped to this, the two hundred, I mean, the twenty forty covers the moped driver in the event of a liability accident, right? So that would be their, that would, it would be in addition to any medical, separate medical insurance coverage that they would have?
Yeah, if, if the bill passes, then you would add the requirement to have BI and property damage coverage.
So I guess essentially what we're saying is that in order to drive a moped on the road, you need to have this additional personal coverage of twenty forty when you drive. Okay, I understand.
Thank you, Chair. HDOT, again, sorry. So in regarding the data provided on the four hundred seventeen crashes, are you folks able to sub that out regarding zip code potentially?
Kristi, did our research include from the hospitals' information on zip code?
Zip code of incident, sorry, not residence.
I can ask about that. That should be easy to get, but the thing is, if they are houseless and they're using a moped, or the crash occurred in a different location from where they live, that might vary, too. So are you looking for where they live or where the crash occurred?
More so further where the crash was, had occurred, but I think that's interesting information to provide as well, if that is available to you folks. It's okay with Chair.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful, actually.
And then on the second comment, so does the HDOT already regulate some form of mopeds as they embark on the roadway?
They do have to go through a safety check and registration.
So cars have to go through the same safety check and registration and require assurance, but as of right now, moped drivers do not have to carry that insurance?
No.
Okay, and from my understanding, most of these motor vehicles cannot achieve the speeds that are of label on the roads that HDOT maintains, is that correct?
They're not supposed to.
Right, okay.
But obviously, certain modifications can occur that make them go faster, personally anecdote. Though I have a mom face and voice, I, in college, had my own moped, and when we took the limiters off and give it a little tweak, it could go seventy-eight miles an hour. That was a race moped.
Yeah, I, because I, I don't.
That was twenty years ago.
So when I was eight years old, got it. So, because I think the biggest concern that ends up happening is that there's almost, I'm not trying to, I don't think the intent is to harm some of these folks, but there's little to no regulation on these forms of transportation that have to occur. And I will tell you, if you come into District Forty-four right now, I could point out several encampments that just strip these vehicles for parts. And in the same way that there's just little to no regulation. So noting some of the testimony of concern, but I think what you folks have brought forward to the committee is damning information at that capacity, so. Thank you.
Members, any, Red Bevslin?
Yeah, for DOT, so of the two hundred and forty-one moped crashes that involved another motor vehicle, do you have any data on who was at fault in those crashes? Was the car hitting the moped, or?
Kristi, did you hear the question? Do we have?
Yes, I did. Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. We can follow up, sometimes as a no-fault state, they don't track it, they just know where the location hit. So it could be anything from someone turning left in front of them, from hitting behind a parked car. They would just, we would have to go through all the schematics that police have to know where the crash occurred and if there's any witness, witnesses to it.
Okay, yeah, if the data's too hard to get through, then, then you don't need to, it was just if you had it readily accessible, it would be helpful. And I have a follow-up for the Insurance Commissioner.
Thank you, sir, for being here. I, I know there's a lot of turmoil in the insurance market, and I just actually had a truck that GEICO will no longer insure as part of, I think, sort of this nationwide turnover in the market. Is there a risk with a single insurer right now covering mopeds? Is there a risk that there could end up being nobody covering mopeds?
I mean, that's a possibility, and, and we're not absolutely certain as to whether that one insurer would or does cover what would qualify as a moped. I mean, we just were on their website and putting in information, and we got a quote, so we assumed that, that insurer is offering. But there is a possibility, it could go either way. If there's a mandate, more companies may write coverage, or may, more might drop out, I mean, some might drop out. It, it is a very difficult and a hard market at this point in time, where, like, in motor vehicle nationwide, the loss cost, the loss expense experience is over about a hundred and twelve, which means for every dollar premium they cover, they collect, they're losing twelve cents. So it's a very, very difficult market, insurance market this time. Hawaii's not as bad, but it is a very difficult one.
Thank you.
Members, any additional questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is HB two zero six five.
Thank you, Chair. HB two zero six five, only one registered testifier, and the last name McClintock in support. Okay, are there any folks online or in the room like to testify on HB two zero six five? Seeing none, Chair.
We don't have anyone to ask questions of, so we're going to move on to HB two five two six relating to motor vehicles.
Thank you, Chair. HB two five two six, up first, Karen Chung, Ward Village Moms in Support.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and Committee members. I'm Karen Chung, I'm the organizer for the Ward Village Moms. Basically, I represent three hundred mothers in the Kaka'akua area. In relation to HB two five two six, when we studied the bill extensively and after discussion with actually DOT yesterday, we see a huge loophole between the day of violation, or, for in this case, is actually when a police pulls over a unlicensed driver, and to the day that he's convicted, and then where all the penalty kicks in. So this is the loophole exactly that killed Sarayara, is that right at the time where the incident happened, a driver that is unlicensed found at the site, there is no, you know, way to pull him off the street. So they can actually resume to drive off in the vehicle. And, and what we suggest is that we need to close this enforcement gap by number one, after he's identified that it's an unlicensed, that the police needs to take the vehicle away or tow to a site for someone with license to pick it up, so that that guy is not back on the street. And we have done extensive research, and then we also read the comments that HPD responded to the bill HB one five six two yesterday. There are currently forty-eight active towing companies on the island of Oahu. So in terms of enforcement of towing the car away from an unlicensed driver, it's not a problem. So we really want to bring to the light that there is a gap hole for, between enforcement and then also the court proceeding, and so we suggest that there is immediate change of language in the bill that empowers the police to do something right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Kim Coco Iwomoto, Individual in Support.
Thank you, good morning, Chair Todd, Vice Chair Keela, and members of the committee. And I want to apologize for laughing early, earlier, Rep. Ayu. In your interaction with the police officer, it reminded us of a conversation we also, that they had earlier about this idea that, oh, when, when we stop somebody and we discover that, that they didn't just forget their license in another purse or another, you know, pocket, but they actually are unlicensed, that the, that the police officer who stopped them and verified this just lets them drive off. And we're, and, and the response, I think, we got in some of the exchanges was that the law doesn't say they, they have to stop them from driving off, which is, it just reminded me, so I'm sorry, that's why I was laughing earlier, this idea that we need to make sure that the law says that the person shouldn't get back in the car, but instead, if there's another passenger in the car whose like, is a licensed driver, or they call a friend, the cop, the police officer should actually call a tow company, and I think we've already passed a law, you've already passed a law that says if somebody gets to the car before, then they can drive off legally. If, if they call their friend, for instance, and says, hey, can you come and drive this car away for me, you're a licensed driver? That should be allowed, or they, or, and the car doesn't need to be towed to the police impound, right? Because it's not an impounded evidence, it's simply a car that doesn't have a licensed driver. So the car can simply be towed to a safe parking area, not the police impound lot. Because we understand that was part of the HPD's concern, they don't have the space. Secondly, this isn't, I think, also part of the dealing with this whole giant issue of unlicensed drivers. And in this case, the gentleman who turned himself in, the alleged person who was driving the vehicle that killed Sarayara, he had, I think, twelve citations for driving unlicensed, because he was unlicensed, and then only six convictions. What also could have happened was that there could have been interventions on the behalf of the court. The court could have ordered the owner of the car that he's driving, and apparently, I think he might not, he wasn't the owner of the car. But whoever is the owner of a car that's being driven without a license, that they need to be answerable to the court, or at least they need to sign an affidavit saying, hey, I know I let somebody who is unlicensed drive my car. I know the next time that an unlicensed driver drives my car, I may be liable, I may face a citation. I know the next time that an unlicensed driver drives my car, I may be liable, I may face a citation. And then if the car is actually owned, you know, like many people get their car financed from the car dealership, that notice gets sent to whoever, whoever holds the title, that an unlicensed driver is driving the vehicle, the insurance company should be notified, I mean, there's all these interventions to get in between an unlicensed driver and the car that continued to drive and in this case, to accidentally, you know, kill somebody. So I think there's a lot of interventions we could rely on, more than just elevating the mandatory minimum sentence and getting more people incarcerated. I think there could be more effective interventions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, Michelle West, providing support, individual. Seeing no further registered testifiers on HB two five two six, anyone in Zoom or on, in, online or in person that'd like to testify?
Hi, Chairman Todd, Vice Chairman and Committee. I am Chevulyn Sonia Todd. Sarah Yara was my daughter. February fifteen of last year, I lost my daughter to an unlicensed driver. He hit and ran a sixteen-year-old on Kapilani Boulevard. I was informed that this person who was apprehended was currently waiting trial for his driving without a license in January. My question is, why was he still behind the wheel? Why was he able to still be on the road? I am here today, not that I could bring my daughter back, but I am here today that we could save another life out there from an unlicensed driver. He had twelve driving without a license. Why was he able to be still on the street? To be able to kill my daughter? That was only a month ago that he was pulled over with, without a license. So I'm begging you, and I'm here as a mom, or for any other moms that's out there, had to go through what I had to go through that can't come before you and speak like I have been an advocate for unlicensed drivers since my daughter has died. Please find it in your heart to make the law stiffer for people that's driving without a license. Because I wouldn't want anyone else to go through what I had to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks that'd like to testify on measure HB two five two six? Mr. Warner?
Well, Chair Vice Chair again. You know, I, I got to know Chevy. You know, I got to do a lot of awareness, sign waving and, and comfort her. And, you know, me and my family, I know exactly what she talking about. Her daughter, my son. You know, I think it boils down to the prosecutors, too. You know, I don't know if it's overcrowded, sound like it is, so apparently they go through the list, you know. We, we put our trust, you know, system. And we, we can just stand here and say, you know, God, get our system to be working, help us, help the victims. You know, as I came today, the vic, I never know they was all gonna be here today. And, you know, as I walked in the room, my, my heart just feels sore. And my heart feels sore every day. You know, every time there's a crash out there, you know, and, you know, there's a debt out there, it, it just brings back, you know, the soreness, the hardness. And, you know, as I stand here, you know, when enough is gonna be enough? When can, you know, we see justice, our judiciary system, our court system? And we, I, I see it, you know, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a legal guy. But what went happened to me made me realize, amen, something is wrong with the, the current laws we have in place right now. And I think, you know, you guys is the one that get the law passed. And, you know, we put you, we, we honestly, all us victims that, you know, sitting here, put our trust in each and every one of you guys. And, you know, I just thank you guys that I could come here with a open heart. And just said that, you know, we reaching out, we crying, you know, I'm a big guy, I'm, I'm not a crier. You know, when, when it comes down to victims, you know, it, it hurts me, you know. You know, it, it, I, I cry on the inside and, and I cry on the outside. I mean, I got no shame or nothing, you know, when it comes down to, to saving lives, I think it's, it's, it's the number one. Safety is the number one thing, and I just appreciate and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any other folks that'd like to testify on the measure before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, do you have any questions regarding this measure? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is HB two five eight zero.
Thank you, Chair, HB two five eight zero, up first, Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation, in support. Thank you. Up next, Major Tanaka-Honu, Police Department, opposition.
Yes, sir, HPD is in opposition. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Monica Amigo in support, Kalani, individual in opposition, Justin Lamb in opposition. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on the matter before us on HB two five eight zero. Anyone online or in person that'd like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, do you have any questions regarding this measure? If not, we're gonna move on to HB two two seven zero relating to the Department of Transportation. It says the YNI Coast Alternate Route Bill.
Thank you, Chair, HB two two seven zero, up first, Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation. Thank you. Up next, Hawaii Military Affairs Council in support. Up next, Michael Rice in support.
Hello, Chair and Committee. Michael Rice, I've been a long lifelong resident Makaha. And this, this bill is far overdue. I, I was fortunate enough that my father worked at Lululei, so we had base access back when Konekohe Pass was still open, at least to those who had base access. One of the concerns, I think, is that if we just focus on like opening Konekohe Pass, the military will probably repair it, but for, but they'll limit access because, well, Lululei is an active military base, it's also got some sensitive things like communication equipment and ammunition bunkers there that they would be very hesitant to allow people at, like, access to the base for that because I re, I remember in the old days when I was a kid going through and seeing all the bunkers and all that separated was a gate with a little padlock. So I, again, I do support the bill, I think other options in Konekohe Pass should be considered, even if the military goes full throttle and supports it and opens it to the public. Just speak, in my written testimony, I included a little map I made of a proposed route that hopefully would help, but again, this is just long overdue, full support.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Individuals in support, Blake Colama, Keith Kayali, Val Valdez, Nancy Jones, Seb Jones, Kalani, Kathleen Moses Benson. Are there anyone online or interested in testifying on the matter, HB two two seven zero? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Okay, I, I just, just before we move on to HB two zero one five, we do have two more of these, I guess, kind of regional access route type pieces of legislation. I do want to state that the intent is to move these forward. So as best as possible, try to summarize your testimony, because we're not, we're not gonna screw anyone over, I promise. So HB, you know, you know, just, you know, just be wary. Okay, HB two zero one five relating to the Department of Transportation. This has to do with emergency egress other than Koma Mai Drive through Pacific Palisades.
Thank you, Chair, up first, Neighborhood Board Chair, Pearl City, number twenty-one, Larry Verre in support.
You don't have to be like, you know, ten seconds, but like, you know what I mean, like, you're, you're here, so, yeah.
I, I just wanted to make everybody accountable. Yes, good morning and aloha, everybody, Larry Verre, Chair of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. And I won't read this, but, but desperately needed, just like YNI, you know, for years, we've, you know, we got one way in, one way out. But, you know, I've, I've tried to analyze and understand more Pacific Palisades for the lessons learned from, from the wildfires we had in Maui. And what's really tough is the, the residents up there, they're on a plateau. They built their property line right out to the edge, and there's no way for fire breaks. And the other thing is, for many, for the last two decades, and this is, this is a quote from my Vice Chair Charmaine, over the past two decades, residents of Palisades have held, have been held captive to water main breaks, tree fallings, to actual hostage crisis events, road flooding, traffic accidents, police shootings, investigations, and much more requiring to close Koma Mai Drive. And I'll be honest with you, I do lose sleep at night when we have heavy rains because we know the albezia trees that we have all over this island, they even take out the H2 sometimes. When those things come down, it's gonna divert that water. But I worry about that bridge and the, and the water flow that comes out of there, there's no other way. And I'll be honest with you, I had heat on social media last night because the residents don't want a regular road for people to, to drive on and cut through to get to the H2. And I've told them, I said, no, this is strictly an egress route. And the main thing is trying to get emergency vehicles in there. The good news for us in Pearl City, we're moving a fire station closer to Pacific Palisades to help out. But if we lose that hairpin turn, bridge, that area right there, the emergency vehicles cannot get in. So anyway, I urge you all, please, to pass twenty fifteen and commend you guys what you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Very eleven individuals in support of this measure, none of them registered to testify. Seeing no further registered testifiers, anyone online or in person that'd like to testify on HB two zero one five? Seeing none, Chair.
All right, members, do you have any questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to HB two one seven five relating to the Ka'ahava Ha'ula Community-Based Long Range Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Chair. Up first, Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation, in support. Thank you. Up next, Michael Kane, Department of Land and Natural Resources, in support.
Tiger Wheels for DLNR, we have strong support for this bill with our proposed amendment.
Thank you. It has the folks registered twice, is that a duplication? You think, or is there another DLNR person? Okay, thank you. Up next, Terry Galpin, individual in support. Eleven folks submitted testimony in support on this measure, no further registered testifiers, anyone online or in person that'd like to testify on HB two one seven five? Seeing none, Chair.
All right, members, do you have any questions on this measure? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to HB two seven zero two relating to road improvements. This has to do with Hana Highway.
Thank you, Chair, up first, HB two seven zero two, Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation. Thank you. For, for folks submitting testimony and support, no other registered testifiers, anyone online or in person that'd like to testify on HB two seven zero two? Seeing none, Chair.
Next, we have HB one nine nine one relating to motor vehicle insurance. I know we're gonna have quite a bit of testimony on this. I do want to state, just to get ahead of time, my intent is to defer decision-making until next week Tuesday to kind of give us time to work through some of these things, because it is relatively complex. But I still want to catch, catch anyone off guard, but we can proceed to the testifier list on HB one nine nine one.
Thank you, Chair, HB one nine nine one, up first, Insurance Division, State of Hawaii, DCC, providing comments. Thank you, Commissioner. Up next, we have David Aniyagi from Turo Incorporated in support.
Well, Chair, Vice Chair, other committee members, I'll be brief. We're gonna stand on, you know, our written, written testimony and support. Just noting and underscoring again that this is, the, the fundamental issue this is about is parity between two industries that have very similar risk profiles, and that's all we'd like to, to say. I'm available for questions if there are any. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next, Matt Sujimura, Enterprise Mobility in opposition.
Stand on my written testimony, but just point out, one major piece of this is the fact that most car rental, when you rent a car, your personal auto policy typically tends to follow you, and that policy is catered specifically for the individual for which it is written. And so that product is best suited to cover that person. And so we feel that that policy should continue to be primary as opposed to requiring that of the rental car company, which has a vested interest in its vehicles already as the owner of its, of all the vehicles within its fleet. But happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan Oe, Hawaii Association for Justice in support. Lastly, Lori Lum, Avis Budget Group, in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Lori Lum, on behalf of Avis Budget Group. We are respectively opposing this bill. And similar to what enterprise testimony is, we just don't believe that Avis budget should be placed in the position of having to provide primary insurance coverage. We do maintain the state financially required insurance, and we believe we should continue to remain in that position to provide coverage only when there's no other valid and collectible insurance available. And historically, this has been the standard for the rental car industry, and any increase in rates is unwarranted. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on HB one nine nine one, anyone in person or online that'd like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, do you have any questions regarding this measure?
I'm just, I'm trying to understand the difference, like why there's, I guess, why primary insurance is necessary? Or like, what, what's the issue with the primary insurance? Can you just explain, sorry?
Sure, and, and what I would say representative value is that this measure would essentially apply the same exact standards and provisions that are currently in the peer-to-peer car sharing model and statute to traditional rental cars. So when it comes to the question of primary, that's, that's why, because under peer-to-peer car sharing, we are, we are the primary.
Okay, and that's because, I mean, is there, for people who rent peer-to-peer versus from a rental car agency, they, they do or they do not have primary insurance, or what, is there a disparity between the two?
Sure, so the, the expectation is, again, to ensure that there's no sort of gap or loss in coverage, right? And as it pertains specifically to peer-to-peer, under our statutes, we are considered the primary in terms of providing this coverage. I can also, we can have a, a follow-up discussion as well.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, just, do you have anything? Are you good? Yeah, I mean, it might be helpful if we, maybe everyone involved kind of circulates some stuff prior to our decision-making, because like, none of us are insurance agents, you know, or that kind of thing, or specialists.
Or run a rental car agency.
Yeah, I know, exactly. It's very highly specialized, but it, it might be helpful, you know, just for everyone's sake, prior to decision-making on Tuesday. And then we'll try our best before sending it off to consumer protection.
Chair, I guess I have one more question. So when you rent a car peer-to-peer, does the owner of the car's insurance cover the driver during a peer-to-peer rental?
So there, again, Turo offers.
Theory's gonna answer.
So, so Turo offers insurance via this group called Traveler's Insurance, which is a third party. And so we have protection plans that will cover the, the guest during their time that they're utilizing the vehicle.
Okay, so it's not necessarily the, the owner of the vehicle's insurance, but it's like Turo or any peer-to-peer offer would have their insurance.
And it depends on the specific incident and things like that, but I'm happy to, again, have a, have a conversation because there, there is also protection provided to the host as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Chair, if I could call Matt, if you could come up, please? So the peer-to-peer model is one model in which the vehicles are independently owned, correct?
Yes.
In your model, your company, or not your company, but Enterprise, for example, owns all of the vehicles.
Yes.
And they offer to the renter a coverage.
Yes.
That they can choose to use or to take for a, a fee or utilize their own insurance coverage for their own personal motor vehicle.
Yes, that's correct.
What does the rental company require to ensure that that person has car insurance?
So I believe that as you go through this, there, if and when that situation becomes applicable.
applicable, Enterprise will do the check to determine whether the driver or the renter in that case has their own personal auto policy. And if it does, the way the statute currently reads, their policy, the renter's policy will be primary. Now, when there is no such policy, I mean, as there sometimes are, that's where, as Lori had stated, all the rental car companies do maintain the state minimum insurance limits. And so we do all have our own, the company's policy that ensures up to the state-required limits for every vehicle. So no matter what, there will always be that coverage there.
And that's even if the renter lied and did not have insurance coverage?
Yes, yes. Because once that action is begun by the injured party, they're seeking damages from both the renter and the company. So naturally, the process will work itself out to figure out who has that and if policies, if lies were made, or, you know, if policies exist or don't exist.
Okay, so just to clarify, the rental companies have their own insurance coverage for their vehicles in the event that the renter does not have insurance?
Yes, as required by state law, as of right now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any additional questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is HB 2380, which makes an emergency appropriation to the Department of Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Chair. HB 2380, up first, Director Salavaria, Department of Budget and Finance, in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Louis Salavaria, standing on our written testimony and strong support of this gentleman bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Seeing no further registered testifiers on HB 2380, anyone online or in person that would like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions regarding this measure?
Yeah, real quick, for Budget and Finance. So what is this fund for?
It is a lot of money.
This is actually the, the money that's collected with the one-half of one percent surcharge that the county has in order for the city and county to pay for heart.
A half a percent?
A half a percent, yes. Sorry, half a percent.
Oh, okay, so this is that fund specifically for the city?
Correct.
Okay, so what about the other counties?
The other counties, there's...
Are they separate accounts?
They're separate accounts. In this particular case, and what we're collecting for the city and county of Honolulu, the amount that's being collected exceeds the amount of the existing ceiling. So at this point in time, there's an accumulation of about $123 million in the state treasury that essentially belongs to the city and county of Honolulu.
Thanks for declaring.
Thank you. Members, anything additional? If not, we're going to be moving on to HB 2490, relating to capital advancement contracts.
Thank you, Chair. HB 2490, up first, Director Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation, in support. Thank you. Up next, Matt's Navigation Company Incorporated.
Wait your turn.
Up next, Melissa Palvasek, Hawaii Harbors Users Group, in support. Thank you. Up next, Chris Nakagawa, Young Brothers, in support. Thank you so much. Seeing no further registered testifiers on HB 2490, anyone online or in person that would like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions?
Real quick, for DOT. Can you explain what this advance contracts are? Capital advance contracts?
I have... Hello, Chair. This is Dre Khalili, Deputy Director for Transportation for Harbor. Sorry, Tammy, I was having trouble in muted earlier. Thanks, Dre. But the question about what is a capital advancement contract, it's basically, so because we are responsible for providing our facilities in a certain condition at a certain level to our harbor users and tenants who use the facility, in some cases, it's easier for them to perform the work, just because coordination and minimizing disruption to their operations, that if they can coordinate with their vendor for an improvement to a public facility that we would have had to do anyway, sometimes it's cheaper and more efficient. So the capital advancement contract is a tool that allows that transaction to happen. The harbor user that would take on the contract and we reimburse them for it, they would have to follow 103D and all the procurement requirements. And there are several safeguards, there's reporting requirements. But it's, it's basically just a good tool for us to work with our private partners to improve our facilities in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible.
Thank you, Chair.
Anything additional? Seeing none, we'll move to the last item on our agenda, HB 1856, relating to traffic regulation. This is an H-SEC priority.
Thank you, Chair. HB 1856, up first, County, Maui County Council Chair Alice Lee, in support. Next, Heather Kimball, County of Hawaii Council Chair, in support.
She's on Zoom.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair Todd, and members of the committee, looking for your support today in moving this measure forward. I come to you as a desperate council member, looking for a way to provide a solution for my community, for a road that was conveyed to the county that was never really meant to be a road, which is the YPO Valley Road. It started out as a donkey trail and was made as a road by the sugar companies and then conveyed to the county when the sugar company went under. And before COVID, there were days where we had as many as 500 cars going down this roadway that has a grade reaching as high as 45%. So what we're looking for here is a mechanism for us to provide management on roadways like this in the counties, understanding that we need to balance public health and safety with the public access to roads that are paid for by publicly funded dollars. So absolutely willing to work with you folks at the legislature if you feel like there's more guardrails needed on this, definitions needed, but urging you to continue to move it forward so that we can provide this tool to the counties for situations like YPO Valley. Thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony, and have a great day. Aloha.
Thank you, Chair Kimball. Up next, Nahelani Parsons, Hawaii State Association of Counties, in support.
Aloha, Chair, and Vice Chair, members of the committee. We echo the comments by Chair Kimball and support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Chauncey Hatiko, Vice President, YPO Terro, Farming Farmers Association, in support. Jim Kane in support, and Bill Stormont in support. Seeing no further registered testifiers, anyone online or in person that would like to testify on HB 1856? Seeing none, Chair.
All right, members, do you have any questions on this measure? Okay, I think we can, there's no need to recess. I think we can roll straight into decision-making. You ready, or you on a recess? You good? Okay. All right, the first item up for decision-making is HB 1576, relating to vehicle number plates. Chair's recommendation is to pass this out with a defective date as an HD1. Members, do you have any questions? Comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1576, propose HD1. Vice Chair and Chair vote ayes. Representative Ayu?
Aye.
Representative Ebslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitigawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, HB 1579, relating to windshield tinting. Plan is to move things forward with a defective date while noting in the committee report some of the concerns regarding federal guidelines and hoping that the department can provide more clarity in what would be a judiciary hearing. And that also gives them some time to kind of figure things out and why there's maybe some discrepancies between states that may not fully align with federal guidelines. So hopefully, they can kind of put things together for any future hearing. Members, do you have any questions, comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1579 to propose HD1, noting the presence of all members. Are there any members wishing to vote reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is HB 1569, relating to motor vehicles. This is the LED bulb piece of legislation. Chair's recommendation is to defer. I think there's something to work out here, though. I think I get really irritated when I see the, you know, very bright beams in my eyes. And I think it's definitely a safety hazard, but we got to kind of work things out in the interim potentially. And then we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is HB 1531, relating to motor vehicle insurance. Plan is to move this forward. Chair's recommendation is just to pass forward with a defective date on HB 1531. Does anyone have questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on the proposed HD1 on HB 1531, noting the presence of all members. Are there any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, your measure, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. The next item is HB 1936, relating to harbor safety. The plan would be to move this forward with a defective date and some technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. We would also note in the committee report that it's not currently clear which state agency or certification body would be responsible for certifying and recertifying these employees for the water carriers. So that's something that would have to get worked out in the interim. My hope is that the stakeholders who are actively engaged in conversations now about how to really structure some sort of compromise that doesn't pass this added cost onto consumers and to industry, while also kind of upholding the original objectives of the bill, that they can find that compromise hopefully in time for what would be a CPC hearing in the next week or two, or if not, potentially later in the session. Members, do you have any questions or comments? Rep. Onishi?
It's very concerning to me that this is, the bill is titled relating to harbor safety, and DOT Harbors didn't even submit testimony in regards to the issue of safety. Now, I mean, is there a safety problem, or isn't there? There are stakeholders on both sides of the issue, and I don't necessarily trust either side, per se, right? I mean, we need data that shows whether or not there is a safety hazard or not. So with that in mind, and knowing that this is moving on to a committee I sit on next, I'm going to be voting with reservations on this.
Okay, thank you. Members, anything additional? And, you know, what we'll do is we'll drop into the committee report, and we'll, I know DOT is aware and listening, that there is a need for them to weigh in in that CPC hearing. Hopefully, be a part of that process that's already ongoing, these negotiations, but regardless, need to provide public testimony going forward. Vice Chair for the vote on HB 1936.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on the proposed HD1 on HB 1936, noting the presence of all members in the with reservations vote. Representative Onishi, are there any other members choosing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, HB 2112, relating to moped insurance. The Chair's recommendation is to move things forward with a defective date, with technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. And in addition to that, we're going to include in the committee report kind of the concerns by our insurance commissioner that we may not have carriers available. I'm hopeful that maybe some of our insurers could potentially weigh in in that if there is a next hearing on maybe the viability, just provide some information from the industry side of things. There is definitely a balance to strike, and I am a little concerned that it seems like the taxpayers may be picking up some of this where maybe that doesn't have to happen. But there's definitely a balance to strike there. Members, do you have any questions? Rep. Ebslin, and then Rep. Ayu.
Yeah, I'll be voting with reservations on this. And full disclosure, I've owned two mopeds in the past, and I, yeah, thanks. I don't own a moped now, and I don't plan to ever own a moped in the future. But I own them because it was the only way that I could afford to get around at the time. And I think when you look at the data on the number of folks that are filing insurance claims that have Quest, which was something like 30%, that's representative of the demographic that is having to rely on mopeds, and because they can't afford a car. And so I am really worried that by putting the insurance mandate on top of them, that that will push them even further away from being able to get to their job or own a moped. And I am also further concerned about the potential lack of insurance options, given the current turmoil in the insurance industry. And I'm literally two months out from having Geico pull my truck off of my policy. So, yeah, I'll be voting with reservations, but I, I'm interested to see how this progresses going forward.
I guess my only comment is maybe giving the insurance commissioner some right to suspend if there is unavailability of insurance, something like that. But maybe you can note that in the committee report.
I think that's a reasonable idea. Since we're already going to include some language about the concerns about lack of carriers, we'll be more specific and maybe lay that out as a suggestion that could be addressed in Consumer Protection.
Thank you, Chair.
Rep. Keela?
Thank you, Chair. I'm voting yes, and not in the capacity to affect, I think, the moped drivers themselves, but I look to the rural parts of Oahu that don't have the proper infrastructure and the negligence that has come off of some moped drivers. I know it's not reflective of all, but in some of the testimony referencing 40, 50 years without any change, I just was telling Rep. Ayu, 250 years ago, there were no Cadillac Escalades on the road. So vehicles have got to bigger, and I think the ultimate insurance is to make sure folks are all safe on the roadway. So I'm voting yes in that capacity.
Rep. Matsumoto?
For similar reasons, the rep. 40, I will have to be voting no.
Anyone else? Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 2112, propose House Draft 1, for sake of making sure votes are listed correctly. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Ayu?
Aye.
Representative Ebslin with reservations. Representative Kitigawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
And Representative Matsumoto with reservation. Thank you. It's on to the chair. Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, thank you. The next item is HB 2065, relating to excessive noise. This is largely a housekeeping measure on dealing with a bill that passed last year. Chair's recommendation is HD1 with a defective date and some technical amendments necessary for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, do you have any questions or comments?
Chair, I have a comment.
Yeah, Rep. Keela, go ahead.
I appreciate the Senate introducer for also continuing to work on this bill, but as I stated prior last year, that excessive noise in rural areas also play a part in safety, not necessarily noise pollution, when you have to make sure you're notified when traveling. So I appreciate that they're making sure to get it specifically to Honolulu County, but I think we get it more specific to areas that are much more dense than rural parts of Oahu. So at this time, it's still going to be having to vote no.
Anything additional, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 2065, the proposed HD1.
Or, this is, yeah, you're right.
2065?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Voting on HB 2065, the proposed HD1. Chair Todd voting aye. Vice Chair Keela voting no. Vice Chair Ayu, I mean, Representative Ayu?
Aye.
Representative Ebslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitigawa?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is HB 2526, relating to motor vehicles. This is regarding the unauthorized driving or operation. And basically, just allowing more, I guess, more delineated punishments for these guys who are operating without licenses or with suspended licenses, in theory. Chair's recommendation is to move things forward with some technical amendments, noting that a lot of the provisions in the bill currently have blanks in terms of number of offenses, but that's something that potentially the Judiciary Committee could be more specific on with maybe more testimony from law enforcement in terms of what would be appropriate. Hopefully, someone like the Public Defender's Office and the Prosecutor's Office would weigh in on what makes sense. We would be inserting a defective date. And in the committee report, we'd like to specifically note concerns raised in testimony regarding these unslicensed drivers being able to drive away after being pulled over, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, considering you could just like pull them over right again, right? In theory. But maybe that's something that could be spelled out more clearly in a future amendment made by the Judiciary Committee. Members, do you have any questions or comments?
Comment, Chair?
Yeah.
In HB 2526, I just want to thank the folks who came forward to testify, and thank you as Chair of Transportation for seeing forth some really strong measures in response to a lot of things that have happened across the state. And I think for people who have testified on this measure on Tuesday and in the next few committees, that there are bills being proposed, not just necessarily in the same pipeline, but in the same realm of just safety all around. So I would encourage all advocates to look at many different bills that might not be to look at many different bills that might not be what they're looking for on paper, but in the same regard of synergy, so thank you Chair.
Anything additional? Vice Chair for the vote?
Thank you Chair, noting the presence of all members, voting on HB 2526 to propose HD1, any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, moving on to the next item, HB 2580 relating to transportation, this has to do with the speed limiting devices on e-bikes. Chair's recommendation is to defer, noting the testimony from the police department about the difficulty of enforcement on something like this. Moving on to the next item, which is HB 2270 relating to the Department of Transportation, this is the YNIC Coast Alternate Route Task Force. Chair's recommendation is to move things forward with a defective date while striking the language on page three, lines eight through nine, because our House attorneys have deemed that language not to be necessary and kind of duplicative of what has already been determined by the Ethics Commission. Members, any questions, comments? Seeing none, HB 2270 for the vote.
Thank you Chair, voting on HB 2270 to propose HD1, noting the presence of all members, any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, moving on to HB 2015 relating to the Department of Transportation, which has to do with the Pacific Palisades, emergency egress. I would note on all of these pieces of legislation that there is a supplementary budget request from the Department of Transportation specifically for alternate access routes, so I'm hopeful that some of these would go towards purposes like these, kind of high-profile needs for alternate access around the state. HB 2015, the Chair's recommendation is to move forward with a defective date, for all of these, it'll be that same defective date of July 1st, 3000, just in case I hadn't noted prior. Any questions, comments? Seeing none?
Thank you Chair, voting on HB 2015, propose HD1, noting the presence of all members, are there any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, moving on to HB 2175 relating to the Ka'ava Ha'ula Community-Based Long-Range Transportation Plan. Chair's recommendation is to move things with a defective date, and also incorporating the suggested amendments from DLNR's testimony. Members, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
Thank you Chair, noting, noting the presence of all members, voting on HB 2175, propose HD1, any members wishing to vote reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Moving on to the next item, which is relating to road improvements, HB 2702, this basically deals with Hana Highway and appropriating for a position. We're planning, Chair's recommendation is just to move forward with a defective date and no other amendments. Members, do you have any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you Chair, noting the presence of all members, voting on HB 2702, propose HD1, are there any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, on the next item, HB 1991 relating to motor vehicle insurance, this is the clarifying U-Drive motor insurance policy requirements. The Chair's recommendation as stated earlier is to, we're gonna defer this to what will become the Tuesday, February 13th agenda, we just have some stuff to work out, it's kind of a technical bill in nature, and I recognize that the Consumer Protection Committee will have an opportunity after this, but I'd like to send it to them as close to a finished product as we can, so I'd like to take some more time with it. Moving on to HB 2380, making an emergency appropriation to the Department of Budget and Finance, Chair's recommendation is just to move things forward with a defective date. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
Thank you Chair, noting the presence of all members, voting on HB 2380, propose HD1, are there any members wishing to vote no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Okay, we have two more bills, we have HB 2490 relating to capital advancement contracts, Chair's recommendation is to move things forward with a defective date. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
Thank you Chair, voting on HB 2490, propose HD1, noting the presence of all members, are there any members choosing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, and the last bill on the agenda is HB 1856 relating to traffic regulation, this is the HZAC priority. Chair's recommendation is to move things forward with some technical amendments, including striking some language in the preamble. It says, basically the language saying is explicitly stated that the property is exclusively accessible via these roadways, shall remain accessible without undue impediment. However, our House attorneys have flagged that that provision is not included in the actual substance of the bill, it's only in the preamble, we're just gonna strike it from the preamble, and then if, if that breaks the bill, they can figure it out in the next committee, but I think we're okay. And then we've also been moving things forward with a defective date. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
Thank you Chair, voting on HB 1856, propose HD1, noting the presence of all members, any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, thank you for your patience, we cleared 19 bills and we are adjourned. Good job.